It's not for a slow-paced, small town.
Oh boy, huh?
Are you calling? How does um?
Sure. Anything you should say. Um, did Carrie tell you he's gonna be out next week too?
No.
Okay, so.
Okay.
He said he's got somebody in mind to come on.
Okay.
He just wanted to.
Alright, I'll have to catch up with him tomorrow, the staff meeting. Oh, we get that other thing too.
Tomorrow?
For the, right, isn't that tomorrow? With the um, the new software?
Yeah.
The old software?
Okay.
Uh.
Good night, Susan.
Are you going to the non-public?
No, 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 thank you. Make a motion to come out of non-public session.
No.
Okay.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Make a motion to seal the minutes since she requested a non-public, just. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. This day just keeps getting better.
Alright.
Thank you, sir.
So, first up, uh, this evening, we have uh, employee handbook review of sorts. Uh, I could not find my draft copy of the handbook. Um, and there was a question that had come up um, about part-time employees being eligible for uh, the paid holidays and then also uh, PTO. I just hope we added new nifty.
Did I print out the?
You did.
Okay. I didn't, I print, I didn't print anything for me.
Like I said, it wasn't a, it wasn't our working copies that we were working on, but
Right, yeah.
I felt like at some point, um, I think it was before you had come on the board, Lou, um, that we had voted to make part-time employees um, eligible for the paid holidays.
Eligible.
And then the PTO, I couldn't recall like what that was.
It was for however many, so if you work twenty hours a week, you get twenty hours of PTO.
Mm-hmm.
If you work fifteen, you get fifteen.
Yeah.
So it was whatever your work week is, that's what you're eligible for, for PTO. That I remember. But the holidays, I couldn't tell ya. And also, um, when that decision was made, the hi- employee handbook was not updated. So, there's that as well.
Yeah, that's very unusual for um, part-time employees, and this is going from the quarter, to have the extra um, things like that.
Not, in my experience, it isn't.
Okay.
Where I, you know, places that I've worked, but that doesn't mean it's. I know we fought for it for years, 'cause the, 'cause it's budgeted for it. Like when Laurie and I were in there, we were like, we don't even get a paid holiday. You budget for it, why can't we get a pa- at least get the paid holidays, you know? You budget for twelve months. But it was never approved, and then I think it was when I was town clerk, part-time, because those two positions were part-time.
When's that? Mm-hmm.
And they voted to make them eligible for PTO. But I don't know about the holidays. So.
Yeah, I don't recall. That was, that was way back.
In the wayback machine.
Yeah, yeah.
See if I can find it though.
And we don't have minutes.
I'd like, you know, if you don't mind, um, I'd like to, let's take some time and review the handbook as it sits now. And um, and make some recommendations.
Yeah.
Whether we all, whether all three of us do it, but I'm going to do that.
Yeah, no, that's appropriate, yeah, something we looked at before, um, to try to, you know, make improvements in there, so absolutely. Um, with some of the topsy-turvy-ness of the last few years,
Mm-hmm.
um, they kinda got, one of those things, a big project that got pushed to the side, so, yeah.
Pushed aside. Yeah, I remember there was something about the um, employee handbook right when I started, um, you know, just about two years ago.
Yeah, yeah. Hoping that this will be the year of stability and review.
Yeah, st- try to preserve status quo.
I'd not say it's status quo, but so- some type of stability where we can, you know, re- refit ourselves, yeah.
I, and I was thinking exactly the same thing when I was driving in today.
Yeah.
We've had a real whirlwind since I've been on.
Yeah. Yeah.
It would be nice to get it down like George Lawrence had. Every other week have a meeting.
That'd be nice.
Well, well, yeah, we'll see about that, but, yeah.
No complaints from me.
There's still some work to be done, but hopefully it'll, it'll be the good work, you know, instead of, yeah.
They're making.
Yeah.
That's the hope, yeah.
Yeah. Like an update of the employee handbook.
Yeah.
But.
Just assigned, official one.
Yeah.
Yeah. When we attempted to uh, update it, we were met with a lot of resistance.
Mm-hmm.
And so any updates have to be very minimal, I think. And that's all been reviewed by an attorney and.
Yeah. Yeah, the employees are happy with it by and large, so, and I love, we have made some changes, you know, here and there, but so I have to really just pull out my, my big old knapsack of papers and start thumbing through everything.
Yeah, I've got like six boxes worth of notes from just the last two years at Penn Year.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There's um, I see a note here which the chief has asked for specifically, but others have as well, move, makes it time transferable.
Mm-hmm.
Never officially done.
No.
And such an easy thing, and like a, a GoFundMe.
Yeah.
For the employees to be able to help each other out.
Yeah.
Yeah, crazy that we haven't done that.
I don't know what we came up against that
Well, I think we just
change for years, but, yeah.
I think we just got, because of the um, tinkering with how the sick time was being dealt with and
PTO, vacation.
and all of that, it just became, I think, we met so much resistance, we just didn't forget it.
Yeah.
That's what I recall, but. I don't know, is that how you remember it?
Yeah, I remember in shock, 'cause I felt like the changes that we were proposing at the time were all good, but.
They were. It's probably better for the taxpayers that our changes didn't go in there. Change is tough.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
Yeah, and then it came down to just adding that one component, um, to allow it to be transferable.
That much I remember.
Yeah.
You said you seem to remember um, part-timers having holidays.
I reme- I remember that it had come up, and then even just how that, the first line reads in the um, last official version that we have. Right at the top, it says the town will grant holiday time off to all employees on the holidays listed below. And it doesn't designate um, just full-time until you get past that list of holidays. It doesn't say that part-timers aren't eligible, but evening.
Oh, hi, is that Sleutman?
Yes, sir.
I think, I had a, I had a question, 'cause I talked to somebody with the state police, and they say it's either a town police or the selectmen could do it.
What's, what's in regards to?
It had to do with a, a license for pistol to sell, and uh, they said that the selectmen can do it too, seems like a lot of people do.
Yeah, there's a license to sell. I'm an FFL holder, so uh, there is something that the town.
License to sell or have one?
Oh, or, no, it's real.
It's a state, it's a state license.
It's a state thing.
But it's issued by the town.
Yeah, but the town can do it, exactly.
Yeah.
For specifically pistols, not the long.
J- are you talking about a carrying permit?
No, no, see, that was the thing, it's, there's this.
Oh.
License to sell handguns.
Yeah, not rifles, shotguns, but like handguns, pistols, revolvers.
I have never heard that the selectmen can do that.
I would haven't doing it, uh, every time, it'll expire when your FFL expires.
Right, which is, which is valid, so if you, if you do with the pistol, like the, the.
Right, so uh, person to see is Lisa, who's also the tax collector.
Oh, okay, that in there.
The town clerk, and she has the forms.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, 'cause I spoke with someone today, it's very specifically, and they said to call her if they had a question, so I wasn't sure. So, uh, you said Lisa?
Lisa.
Okay, they're their daytime.
And she's here at daytime, uh, she'll fill out the form, it'll be sent to us.
This is a copy of what it looks like?
I know what I have, it looks like I have.
Okay, so you know.
But actually, it, it's a lot bigger than that.
Yeah, oh yeah, this is just the, okay, but you know what I'm talking about.
Exactly.
And, and she need a copy of the license, the FFL?
Uh, yeah, we need a copy.
Which, you know, I've got, you know, so. Um, well, that's pretty much it, so Lisa.
Call, yeah, talk to her, her, have her, uh, fill out the form. And it'll come to us, uh, for signature on next Tuesday.
So today's, so a week from today?
Yeah.
Okay, and would I pick it up, or does it get mailed, or?
Yeah, she'll give you a call, let you know when it's, that it's ready.
Yeah, they probably have my number, so, okay, well that makes that easy.
I'm sorry, what was your name, sir?
Talling, I'm Benty's son, Hoistman.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, he's my dad.
Oh, really?
Yeah, Benty.
Nice to meet you.
Oh yeah, he, um, and he used to be, well, I guess, selectman.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. And just asked me if I wanted to, and I'm like.
Still well-known. And respected.
Oh, sorry, and your name's, 'cause I, I, you know, I.
Yeah, and by the way, we are on live TV right now, so.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's okay.
Yeah, I'm Jason Somer.
I, I never watch it, I, but I hear it's on cable or something.
Yeah.
Yeah, Sean Talbot.
Sean Talbot and.
Jason Somer.
Somer, Finn.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, like we.
Yeah.
I, I think we met, I've just been a while.
I think, probably at the polls.
And then Lu Alvers.
Lu Alvers.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I don't, I know, I somehow know your name. Yeah. I, no, we haven't met though.
No, we haven't.
Okay, yeah, well, I'm Benty's son, so. And they, they've been, well, we've been here a while, so.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, alright, well, yeah, it's a nice day out, it's crisp.
Yeah, yeah, thanks for stopping by.
Okay.
Are you a new FFL holder, or?
Um, yeah, it's my more recent, yeah.
Oh, okay, if you have any questions, um, feel free to give me a call, you want my phone number?
Yeah, sure, um.
Uh, eight seven eight four seven three one.
Four seven three one.
Yeah.
Four seven three one, okay, yeah, 'cause it's the eight seven eight.
And I have an old Wilton road.
Um, oh, which?
Old Wilton Road.
Oh, that's to go to Greenville?
Yeah.
Okay, I know.
That's if you turn left at the corner.
Oh, okay, so you, you know a lot about firearms and so forth?
Yeah, I've been doing it since nineteen eighty-nine or ninety-one.
Okay, wow. Huh, y- you do, um, like, any things, especially gunsmithing, or no?
Yeah, yeah, I do smithing, I do um, uh, things with silencers and a class three manufacturer.
Yeah, which is a different fee of tax, if you will.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's um, it, there's, it levels, yeah, I'm familiar with that.
Yeah.
Oh, that's interesting.
That was great, great to have you come by.
Oh yeah, not deep, deep, yeah.
That's good, good.
Alright, thanks.
Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Okay, yeah, go ahead.
Take care.
I love this night already.
Real intermission, second intermission.
See, every time we start work on the employee handbook, that's what happens.
Right. Do I put that in?
Yeah, just leave it alone. Yeah, yeah.
I even know how to spell his name.
Alright, yeah, so the copy that Debbie provided us this evening, um, if I could pull that up, Lou, it's uh, page twenty-eight, where it talks about the time off benefits.
Okay.
And that first line says all employees, and then down below is where it says designates full-time eligible employees.
Contradictory or?
Well, and that's why I don't, I can't, I remember that we had a discussion about this, and I just, I know, and I.
Yeah.
But it says full-time, yeah, but it says full-time eligible employee.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And it seems like, um, benefits are only available to full-time, is that normal?
I've heard all different models.
Yeah.
Yeah, especially in, in municipal world, um, like no, they have notes in the se- like a lot of notes in the section, um, 'cause it's kinda where we were working
Mm-hmm.
under.
Yeah.
Uh, Debbie, can I ask you to, um, if you could get a employee handbook from Peterborough and, let's say, Jaffray?
Sure.
I think you gave us one from, where was it, Milford or?
Wilton?
Wilton, maybe?
Blinby?
Yeah, I think I knew you guys wanna w-.
Yeah, something like that.
Yeah, she did.
Book, book line term?
From another time.
Yeah.
Yeah. So. Uh, so correct me if I'm wrong, 'cause you must have meant, you remembered that meeting specifically?
So, I don't remember the meeting, 'cause I wasn't there, but I remember the decision, because I was like, oh sure, once again,
Yeah.
me and Laurie fought for, for years and didn't get it.
Yeah.
And then they did it, so they did it after Laurie had left and I was town clerk, and then, I don't know if it was the same,
Did what?
gave PTO to part-time employees. And then, I don't know if it was the same year or the following year, those two positions were made full-time.
Yeah.
So I don't know
How did they do that, because
when, when which ha- that's what I'm saying, they have.
seven point oh three says it's eligible full-time employees.
But the decision was made, but it thought employee handbook was never updated. That's the issue. Or part of the issue.
Yeah, and from that period, uh, the minutes were, they're just, had started to pile up
Yeah.
in the background.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So there's no, there's no minute record to go back to.
Mm-hmm.
Hoping that there's a, you know, video that we can go back to, like, of the meeting, 'cause they were all recorded at that point still.
If you can figure out when it was.
Yeah. Yeah, that's why the notes are important.
Yeah.
I gotta dig back, back, back. Exactly. And that was an especially tumultuous time, there's a lot of
Mm-hmm.
changes occurring.
This was before I came on. Is that when you?
Or within that same time period, like, yeah.
Is it?
'Cause you were in the tax collector's office when he came on.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. So, I can't remember if there was something that we had spoken about before you came on, or after you came on, and a part of the rest of it, like the whole package. So, but it's, it's right around there, like, within the months, like surrounding you coming onto the board.
I think the whole part-time vacation, PTO va- uh, vacation, whatever you wanna call it, time was before the whole employee handbook discussion.
Okay.
About revamping the whole thing, I think it was before that. Not a hundred percent sure, though, everything glurs together now.
Yeah.
That makes sense to me, 'cause I don't have any recollection of it, but that's not necessarily,
Okay, so maybe it was before.
that doesn't necessarily mean that it didn't happen.
Yeah. Alright.
You mean you don't remember every word at every meeting?
That's why the minutes are oh so important.
Yep.
Um, yeah, so I'll continue to look back, you know, like, through my things as well. And we'll look to, um, have the, the handbook, what do you think, in a month, Lou, you wanna bring this back up?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Alright, so I'll, um, I'll see if I can get however many handbooks I can
Yeah, just a, just a few.
throw 'em at ya.
Yeah.
See if I'm still with you.
Town.
Town's about the same size as us.
I'd say quite the campaign, the way.
Okay.
Uh, one month.
Yeah, so the twenty-sixth of March. Sound good, how's that timeline-wise, um, after the, uh, vote, it's a couple weeks after the vote?
Sure.
That's fine.
Do you have a lot of work after the vote, or?
Well, I do, but oh, it's March, that should be alright.
So if you're, like, right at the beginning of April, you have to have a bunch of stuff submitted to DRA, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that should be alright, though. I, I have most of the stuff that I could submit already submitted.
Okay.
Like deliberative minutes and the sixth, everything that was posted, they don't require it till April first, but I've it's not gonna change between when I did it and now, it's the signed things that were posted, so I've already uploaded all of that stuff.
Okay.
I just have to do, um, how you have to approve either the default budget or the proposed budget in the software, and then send that to the DRA, but everything else is already there. Trying to be proactive.
March twenty-sixth.
Alright, so March twenty-sixth at five?
Yeah.
Hmm.
Yeah, yeah, right now, I'll have it at five.
Okay. Alright, good luck.
That could actually go out to the employees, if anyone has any thoughts they wanted to have us consider, that would be good.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, a preemptive, before we start filling with it.
Mm. Well, just, some people may have s-
Okay.
I know, makes sense, yeah.
Yeah.
Some good ideas.
Yep.
You learned. Everyone was just gonna go right back down the old path again.
Oh, well, we can do that too.
Alright.
Okay.
So, it looks like you had some policies and procedures written up
Yeah, um
for us to look at.
I'm, I'm not letting that go, so these are actually new, not things we already had, so.
Yeah.
Um, but things that we probably need to address. And again, they're just drafts. Other towns combined, whatever, however, right?
Hmm.
Yeah.
So.
So do you guys wanna spend time reviewing these this evening together, or do you wanna review them at home and come back with?
At, oh, at home first.
Okay.
And, uh, I do wanna compare them with some, um, um, non-municipal plans to see how things work, I mean, this one here, if you go to page twenty-nine, it says PTO's, um,
What?
only for full-time employees.
Okay, yeah, and then we're switching gears from that, 'cause we're gonna come back to that
Yeah.
in a month or so, but then there's also some other policies and procedures that Debbie had, uh, written out, uh, for our review.
Okay.
Is that a side of the background?
Regarding.
I see that.
Yeah, background check policy, uh, volunteer policy,
Yeah.
Yeah.
and then a policy request for governmental documents and records, so the right-to-know ninety-one A, uh, requests.
I think we do that today, I don't know. Do you think so? Or would you?
I'd feel better if we reviewed it and came up with any type of, you know, alterations that we'd like to see, and then discuss those, so we don't go through it haphazardly. Maybe they'll give us ample time to consider, uh, what we're looking at.
Yeah.
And they all are in a dropbox that I email to you guys.
'Cause. Alright. They're all prone to, uh, wanna have a second
Absolutely.
second thought at it, you know, afterwards, so even if we made the decision tonight.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're right, you're right, that's good.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, so with the, um, the volunteer policy, was that something, for all of these, did you take information from other communities to draft these, or?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah. Some, some, like I had a couple of different, there were, um, did, one of them I think I got partially from Primax as well. I think. I can't remember. One, one of them I started way back in, like, last year sometime, and I, I went to start to do a new one and save it, and I would, 'cause I had just started it, and I was trying to save it as whichever one it was, and there was ar- I, I had already started one last year, and I was like, oh, alright, let's look at that one again. But I, I have a bunch from other towns that, um, you know, kinda compare and contrast and
Yeah.
I mean, but I can send you those too, I'll, well, I, I'll put 'em in the drop, that same dropbox
Okay.
of all the other stuff that I have.
Alright, then, did you have, um, the other sheet, the application for the commissions, boards?
Oh, did I not print that?
No.
Yes, do you want to look at that tonight?
Alright.
Sorry.
Oh, it's fine.
I thought I printed that.
That's a nice stack of homework.
That was pretty good, though.
Yeah.
Um, question. Uh, they have a volunteer policy. Now, the, um, my wife just got involved with, um, um, the, uh, the voting tables and stuff like that.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, that, she's volunteering for that, but she's also getting paid twenty-nine dollars for, for doing that. So does that actually fall under volunteer policy, or does that, um, fall under, um?
Is it a stipend, or?
Yeah, or, or a stipend, 'cause it would be for each election.
Yeah, yeah, it's paid, it, so it's not volunteer. She's being compensated for it.
Yeah.
Like, we read at the top of that policy, it, um, it says is it?
Volunteer is an individual who without compensation or expectation of compensation
Yeah.
is number two.
Yeah. So this kinda defines some of that.
So I think we need to discuss that with Brenda or, um, Tina, or whoever else. Uh, there's also Daryl. Daryl Diamond Prep.
What aspect would you like to discuss with them?
Well, is it a volunteer thing, or is it the expect?
As a big, so what we're discussing right now is, uh, the people that, um, work the polls.
Yep. Ball clerks.
Um, yeah.
Those are paid.
Hmm?
Those are paid.
Those are paid, yeah.
Yep. Is it for you just as?
So that's a, that's considered a stipend for them, when they?
It's seen. Uh, it's hourly, I don't know if it's necessarily, n- they put it in the budget, not as a stipend.
Okay.
Just an hourly, so like, this year we have four elections, so they had to budget for X amount of ballot clerks for X amount of hours times four.
Hmm. Okay. Yeah, that, that's a
So, I don't think it's a stipend, they're n- and they're not volunteers.
I was Okay, so they're just paying, part-time paid employees?
Seasonal-ish.
I guess, seasonal, yeah, I wouldn't, I don't know that I would necessarily consider them part-time.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm just kinda curious, because I was surprised when Claudia got, um, a check for twenty-nine dollars.
Yeah. Yeah, it's not volunteer, it's, it's a paid.
Alright, and then that last form, uh, that Debbie, Debbie printed off for us, it was one that I was working on, whether, um, in regards to um, people being appointed to the different boards and committees, um, and having a, a simple process and a explanation of what the flow is. Um, 'cause there's been some thought and expectation that if a, uh, board, committee, commission appoints someone at a meeting, that a selectman will come and then swear them in, which isn't necessarily, um, the way that it, it goes. You know, 'cause we should get a recommendation from that board or committee or commission of an appointment, um, and then we would approve it here. And they don't need a selectman to swear them in, they could simply go to the, the town clerk, um, at their leisure, in order to get sworn in, uh, for that.
There was a question on how many of these positions actually need an oath. Like if we're making people do above and beyond by going in and being sworn in and
Hmm.
Did you ever hear that?
No, nobody's questioned it.
Really?
Yeah.
And it had to be sworn in for, um, And it had to be sworn in for um um the planning board.
Yeah.
Yeah, and the conservation commission and planning
Okay. Yeah, planning board.
assessing, trustees of the trust funds. Supervising the checklist.
But I think of things like
Do the uh do the um
We had the F A C. Some of the
Do the ballot clerks need to be sworn in?
do. Yes, we have all those oaths. Mm-hmm.
And yeah, like the F A C, the Heritage Commission, the Memorial Day Committee, the all of these little
Yep.
semi-active
Volunteer.
Um I don't know, I don't I've never had anyone object to it. It's just
Yeah. Yeah.
I don't know why the a uh Memorial Day Commission would have to be sworn in.
Conservation does. Co- because you're you're doing a service for the town.
Yeah.
I guess. I mean.
Uh the question was brought up and I've never had anyone object, but.
Yeah.
But but you know, part of that sworn in policy is following the constitution, kind of both the state and legislature et cetera, et cetera.
Right, yeah.
And how would a Memorial Day Commission?
They they do have um they do
Protest.
Well, how would a conservation commission say?
Yeah, they do spend public money.
Right.
So.
Okay.
Yeah.
That sort of thing.
I mean, I don't think it's
No, I don't think it's bad, but I just
Yeah.
And then even like where this kinda came from was I look at an example from Goss Town?
No.
No, Bosco- Boscoon, yeah. And they actually had a whole bunch listed out, so there were numerous different
Boscoon.
uh committees, you know, at the top. You know, so it kinda stated which ones.
Which ones what?
Um they required, you know
Which? Yeah, boards and commissions.
You know, to be sworn in and selectmated for.
Committees.
Well.
Um so that might could be something that we add to this to to clarify which ones um we'd like to, you know.
Yeah, and we the uh the other thing to keep in mind is so we I understand the reason for this because we don't know, right? When people were appointed, are they supposed, did they have a term length?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um apparently the R S As say that an appointed person can stay if no one replaces them.
It depends on what board or commission. The different
Yeah, 'cause there ain't if they can't.
Do they
The C B A gets appointed by us.
Mm-hmm.
But aft- even after their um uh their term expires, they can continue working that position until they either get replaced or get sworn in again or whatever.
That yeah, they there if there's no one to take their place and there's just alternates and they don't wanna be a member
Right.
as far as the Z B A is concerned that you don't have to be reappointed. You can just stay until there's someone that wants to.
I would think that probably goes with all of them. Can you think of any that it doesn't apply to?
Well, it's not specifically under the Z B A
Right.
uh R S A.
R S A.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not the as far as I know, it's not there for the planning board.
But so planning board would only they would only have alternates as appointed.
The pl- planning board's elected. Correct.
Well, unless do you have an appoint an alternate as a planning board member for where the duration of a year till the next election.
Well, no, not necessarily, yeah. Right.
So that's kinda where that
Mm-hmm.
you know, 'cause it's an elected role.
Yeah, it is different for appointed.
Gonna be the same thing for any
Yeah, so that would like by a board being elected.
like any of us, like if you know, if we had left, like someone doesn't just fill out the term, they can only serve until the next election
Elected, yeah. Right.
and then they have to go on to the ballot. Um and it was thought at one point that you did fill out terms, but we've come to know that it's not that way.
Right.
Yeah, so this was just
Paper trail.
Paper trail.
Paper trail, which
Yeah. We clearly need
we need to have
Yeah.
some system where we know where the paper is.
Yeah.
All over that.
It's great that we have a paper trail, but I've been told by a former select people that, oh, we have a whole folder on such and such and I'm like, do you remember where? And they're like, nope.
Yeah, and that's where it comes down to stability and yeah.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Yeah.
And
'Cause each administrator that we've had come through, you know, whether it be temporary or they thought it was gonna be long-term, has gone in and upheaved the apple cart and made cha- like drastic changes to things, like filing of different documents and things. So when you yeah, and we had a few over the last, you know, five years, six years.
Just
That's a real shit, doesn't it?
Yeah.
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 Yeah, I think it's one thing I'm seeing, these um background checks for everything
Mm-hmm.
is a commentary on how much we've evolved as a society where we can't trust.
And that's what I got to say about that.
Oh, the background checks, yeah.
Always have to.
Yeah, and I think that, you know, it has a lot to do with uh insurance companies and then also uh community members, you know, there's very amount of people that would like to know
Yeah.
Mm.
you know, somebody's background is good enough to be around the kids or um adequate to be driving and
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, there's some places where you where you need it, but uh to have it for blanket everything is
Mm-hmm.
um just a commentary on our litigious nature, a litigious society that we live in
Yeah.
where we just heap up laws and laws and laws and
Yeah, yep, absolutely.
And I'm not saying we shouldn't do 'em, I'm just saying it's kinda sad.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree. Uh it was always uh someone looking for that weakness in paper, what you don't have for paper, you know, in policy procedure
Mm.
um to capitalize on that in some fashion. Not that it would've changed the outcome of any anything necessarily, but um yeah.
Cool.
More paper, we're gonna add paper.
Yeah, and and every one of them costs the town money.
Paper to the staff, yeah. Yeah.
So we gotta limit the amount of volunteers we have.
Mm-hmm.
'Cause it gets too expensive to have volunteers.
Oh, yeah, to some degree.
I mean, we could put some uh some towns have it in there that um the applicant, and I guess we used to do this. Um the applicant pays for it for the background check and then if everything's okay, they get reimbursed. If it's not, they lose. Like if they don't end up volunteering slash working for the town, then they forfeit the money that it costs to to do it.
And in the time since um it changed to the town assuming that cost and not um charging the person that's looking to volunteer I can't think of any one time where it's been
Not, yeah.
like frivolous or like, you know, like it, I don't know, people don't abuse getting background checks.
Right.
I guess, and it makes it much more streamlined um and it's a very, you know, small token
Yeah.
you know, of, you know, thanks for stepping up and uh yeah, and being willing to subject yourself to this, more or less, is the way I view it.
Yeah. And it's much paperwork and all of that, you know, accounts payable and then paying 'em back and it's just a
No, I would never wanna have people pay for the background check. That would just squash
a big headache. Yeah.
That could be our response to them.
so many people.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, some things, there's costs to doing business in the times that we live.
Yep. Apparently the school, they do they have to pay for their own background checks.
Who?
School employees.
School employees, okay.
School doesn't pay for 'em.
Alright, yeah, so if you all, you know, review this stuff and we'll come back to it next week. Um compare notes and see what we can do to move this forward, these policies, this little stack of policies and procedures.
If you want more, I can keep 'em coming.
Let's get it, let's get through this first. And for every one of these that we um implement
Yep.
one ordinance falls.
That's a good idea.
Okay. Okay.
Thought you'd like it.
You know.
I'll send you a little link to the one that has everything in it so you can pick which ones you want to cancel.
Yeah. That'd be good, yeah. Do you have to throw that in Dropbox actually?
It's already in Dropbox. You guys already had it for a year now.
Oh. I don't know what to dr- there's so many different Drop boxes.
I know. Well, that one had that one was its own.
Oh, alright, alright.
But you guys have had it for more than a year.
Alright, cool, yeah, so it's
For for your reference at any point in time when you got bored.
So it's
'Cause that's a thing.
the dot gov emails migration
Yep.
successful-ish with some quirks.
Yep.
So if anybody has tried to reach out and didn't succeed or haven't received a response, it may be
Yeah.
due to the migration.
Yeah.
It was fine with my home computer, like I said, the other thing I
Yeah.
it's had I just have to look up how to set it up on my iPhone or iPad.
Which
Yeah.
I still have to do, so yeah.
And I had, like I said, I u- I was using the Outlook app on my phone.
Mm-hmm.
And every time I got a work email, it would just say, hey, you get a work email.
Right.
But now I had to go into settings and enter it that way, so now I have to toggle back and forth between my personal and my work.
Right.
Oh, that's not good.
No, I don't like it. But I couldn't get the app to work with Greg was here too. He said, no, you're just gonna have to do it the other way. So.
You don't have a you have a town cell phone, right?
It's my personal cell phone.
I Really?
Mm-hmm.
That don't make sense.
But it uh paid, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, it's reimbursed.
Thirty, yeah, thirty bucks, there, yeah, yeah.
How part of it is, yeah.
But given um what we've learned about uh right to knows and everything.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, because I only use my work email for work and I only use my personal email for personal, even though it's on the same phone, I don't think you can
You can't.
You can get my all my work email stuff
Hmm.
even though it's on my phone, it's on, you know, and it's on the computer. I don't think you can view any personal emails. Because I don't use my personal email for any reason for work.
Not unless you open it up to a family for for a family thing that gets shared between your phone and whoever else.
No, I have my personal email for just me
That's you.
and my work email for just work.
Just you.
Mm-hmm.
Just me, yeah.
So these three policies.
Yeah.
Have an understanding for next week.
Yes.
That's a homework.
Any revisions, yeah.
Well, next week we've got the um we're not gonna have much time to discuss stuff 'cause we've got the candidates night.
At seven?
Yeah.
At seven.
Yeah, yeah, so we'll have enough time to go through and at least, you know, take each other's uh notes down and see which ones we can move along and which ones need further review.
Do we know how many candidates there are?
Well, 'cause we can, so we're kinda we're gonna get into that now.
Oh, okay.
Um so it was brought up um that it might be a good idea to have the candidates night at Messina
Right.
as um last year's uh candidates night was well attended and
Standing them only.
Yeah, exceeded this space and given the current um climate and interest in the this year's uh election in March um we would probably have more attendees. And um so what do what's you all's thoughts on moving to Messina? We got the go-ahead uh from the facilities
Hmm.
uh director.
Have we had a response of how many candidates are coming?
I have I think five or six.
That said they'll be
Yeah, I know Bob Romerl, he's running for moderator, but he's not gonna be in town, so he can't.
Mm.
Um He Sue's, I believe, said he would be there. Trying to think of who else. I have it written down in my
So there are people.
There are people who are responding.
I have no objection to having it at the school.
Okay.
Do you?
Lou?
No, probably just pointed to recommend it.
Good. Excellent.
Okay, I'll let Craig know, even though I didn't get his email, so saying it was approved. I'm glad you I'm glad that weird thing happened at that weird time, 'cause I wouldn't have known.
I'll forward that, I'll forward that to you. Yeah, she said that my email was shut down and then all of a sudden an email came through and
Yeah, but I didn't get it and he responded to both of us.
Yeah.
Well, did you check that? Did he res- did he he reply to all of it just to you?
I don't know.
There was one email that showed up on um um the old uh dot org, but it did not come across um on the dot gov.
So when so he had switched mine over, I don't know, like eight months ago.
Right.
So I was the only one that had a dot gov email address. And then um when he did that migrate, just to try it out, see how it was gonna work, see if I lost anything, whatever. And it took, I don't even know, like two or three days for all of the emails to come back in. And even when he was doing the migration then, I had nothing between October twelfth of twenty-three. Nothing, 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 and then I had like five from that day that he was doing it on Friday. So there was nothing between October and January, February.
Yeah, and like I said, it was the the everything from dot org did come uh did get um
Eventually, yeah.
Well, it came over right away.
Oh, mine didn't.
You know, and um but the only thing, there was one email, I don't remember if it was from Sean from you that uh didn't come over and it's been two two days, three days.
So I'm gonna let Craig know and I'll also have Sue posted on the website location.
Oh, I'm gonna I'll reply to that, C C U, that we approved it, and then you'll have like the whole thing.
Okay. Okay, and I'll have Sue posted on the website and Facebook saying that it's gonna not gonna be here, it's gonna be there.
Yes, yeah.
I didn't have to come over on dot org. 'Cause I still had to get dot org.
And then I would suggest um next Tuesday, put a letter on or tape a sign on the door.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, yes.
Because the word has gotten out
Yeah.
and so leave the light on and it
Could we have that sign changed over? The
I'll I'll put it on the I'm gonna put it on
Ooh, the D P W.
The D P W.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
And I'll put it on the front
That's a great idea.
Yeah.
I will have I'll have them put it on the front sign too.
Yeah. We probably have Messina, throw it up on there, like a sign.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, see if they'll do it on there.
Yep.
Okay. Change of venue, okay.
Yeah.
Alrighty.
Did you have anything else for us?
Um no. Just all that, so.
Was there anything with Brown Field?
No, I won't hear anything from them for a couple weeks probably.
Lou had mentioned something in this folder, Rob Brownfields? Before the meeting, was there?
Yeah, the uh yeah, we got a fifty-four thousand dollar grant on or fifty-eight thousand dollars, something like that, fifty-four thousand. And um
Where is it, Lou? You said there's paper.
Then Hmm?
You said there's a paper that referenced it.
Right.
No, it's it's in the minutes.
Um and no, this is one where it's got from somewhere from what's the name of the company that's actually doing the
Ransom.
Ran- ransom. That the total bill from ransom was gonna be sixty-eight thousand.
Can you pull it out?
Yeah, I I we didn't pay we're not paying ransom anything.
Uh Try to find it. Was it was it a bill or was it correspondence?
But Not going to this. Go ahead with whatever else you're doing now.
Well, no, we're gonna stay on this like subject.
And that would've had to have come across my desk for me to code it and I noticed nothing from ransom.
Were you talking? Oh.
That's payroll. Wouldn't be in payroll.
This is not this, what's the other one?
That's the correspondence folder and there's minutes from the last couple weeks.
Okay.
So part of the part, so we're not like technically receiving a grant. Southwest does all of that part of it, so part of it is from Brownfield and part of it is from the D E S.
Okay, this one's got part of it from Brown, um the Brown Street, I think then something, okay, the Brownfield Advisory Committee.
Yeah, that's the minutes from their meeting.
Okay, and it had said that um. Not to exceed lots ninety-seven and ninety-nine properties turned by road and which approved is presented at a cost to S W R P C's Brownfield Assessment Program, not to exceed fifty-four thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Mm-hmm.
Immediately after that is a memo from ransom. And going through exactly everything that they were going to do.
Mm-hmm.
And that had a. Budget here of detailing everything that they're going to do, total estimated cost of sixty-eight thousand four hundred and seventy-five.
So the remaining after the fifty-four thousand, that's what Brownfield is paying?
Brownfield's paying fifty-four thousand and the budget from from ransom is sixty-eight thousand.
Yep, so Brownfield is paying part of it up to the fifty-four thousand and the remainder is paid by the D E S.
Okay.
There is no cost to the town.
Okay, that I didn't pick up on.
Yeah.
Alright, and when's the, the next meeting? Just that's, alright.
I haven't, I probably won't hear anything from them for a couple of weeks.
Yeah.
They'll let me know when they're gonna go out and do the testing and all that kinda stuff. I don't know if they have to wait for the ground to unthar or, cause they have to do soil testing and that kinda stuff.
Okay. Did you have any issue or uh anything to bring up, Jason?
I did. And I don't know if you feel it would need to be in non-public, let me know, but the chief sent us an email asking for permission to. Hire officers who have left the department as part-time.
Hmm.
Um, do we need to go into non-public or can we authorize him to?
Yeah, I don't think that we need to go into non-public.
Yeah, I didn't think so.
Yeah, Mark was leaving.
Yeah, yeah, we're.
We're not gonna mention names, then we don't have to go into non-public.
Will we, yeah, yeah. This is a general, general discussion surrounding that, um, can do it.
Okay.
So if they have left on good terms and he would like to hire them as part-time whenever they're available.
Right, and they both agreed to, to do that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I'd like to make a motion to grant Chief Abel the authority to do, to hire former employees as part-time employees.
Well, second it. All in favor?
Aye.
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 The only other thing I had was Peter had brought up a while ago, um that he would like to tackle the Jaclyn Drive drainage problem. That we talked about at one of our meetings. Um. And he said it's just causing an issue. Do you remember that?
Mm-hmm.
I remember the issue, I didn't remember having in any at length dialogue.
Yeah. Yeah, I thought that, that taken care of during um before Peter went um left or retired.
So we had it in, in one of our.
No, he brought it to our attention, showed us pictures and said there's been some manip- or needs to be some manipulation of terrain. Um, on somebody's lot to fix the problem.
Hmm.
Are you thinking of blueberry?
Until, and Peter, our road agent, was wondering like, when can we address this thing because it's dumping water?
There's some issues over at the um, with the people in that area.
Yeah.
Where they would like a more official um engineering plan of what exactly is gonna be done out on the common land.
Who would like? Who would like that?
Some other, like residents out there, uh cause I had been a part of a meeting uh with a gentleman that frequently comes to the planning board.
Oh. Mm-hmm.
Cause he was looking to, you know, have those alterations made.
Hmm.
And I just attended as a, you know, selectman slash resident, you know, of the town and trying to help him understand what the process would be in order to, you know, get access back there.
Yeah.
Um, essentially it would be, they'd have to have a vote of the H O A.
Which is non-existent, from what I understand.
It's not, well, it can't be non-existent.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's a reluctant H O A. So, yeah, and that maybe what Peter was alluding to when he said that there is somebody.
Yeah. Yeah.
At least one person there.
Hmm.
Who is willing to come in and talk with us and try to work something out, and I'm not sure who it was, but.
So, so the town doesn't have any, you know, we do have the road, but then the common land.
Mm-hmm.
That authority would have to be granted um from the H O A in order to go in there unless they're.
I don't think we can touch the common land, it's theirs.
Yeah.
I thought it was just.
We can, we can only touch the herd.
Well, if they gave permission, we could.
I thought.
What kind of liability would that cause?
I thought this was a drain, a drain on the road in front of one of the houses.
I don't think it causes any liability. I don't think it caused any liability.
Cause it kinda gets into people's property rights and we stay out of most of that.
Yeah. Exactly, but if they grant permission.
Yes, but. Cause what we could do is say that the road infrastructure is being eroded and um compel them to act. That's our role. We could compel them to act and if they fail to act, then that's a whole nother story and a whole nother process.
Yeah. That is, that is.
But that's how that process would go.
Could go.
Yeah.
And the other process, the other way to approach it is to just do a joint venture and say, we'll help you, let's get this done. Which I've been, I've been told that that is generally at the D P W director's discretion, maybe on smaller things.
Yeah, but this is an uh area of conflict over there, so I'd advise to tread lightly.
Yeah, and I'm not treading at all, I'm just bringing up.
And not to go trompe in or out, uh, yeah. Yeah, no, because it's.
But there is, remains a concern.
And this has, this has been stated, what this process is and this individual, I'm thinking it's probably the same person, is trying to circumvent what he's been told already.
Yeah. Hmm.
There is a, like a, a correct path forward to this, unless we feel like it's at the detriment of our infrastructure.
Hmm. Yeah.
Then our course of action is to compel the H O A to convene and to take care of it.
Yeah.
Cause from what I understand, a simple John Deere backhoe tractor would be able to make the alterations.
Yeah.
But there's neighbor disputes and, you know, just like other parts of the town, people can't agree on something, but they need to come to an agreement on their own.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. And if that's common land, then it does add a whole nother dimension.
Mm-hmm.
To how it's approached, especially if there's no formal committee to deal with.
Yeah.
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 That makes it difficult, so I just thought I'd bring it up and I'll pass it along to Peter.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's good.
Yeah, cause I've been hearing about that for a year and a half, two years.
Yeah.
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 Yeah, and I'd love to just be able to go back, like it sounds like maybe even a shovel and three guys could do what it would take to put the water back. The way that it was designed to flow, which was down to a fire, like a different fire pond.
Oh.
Yeah, yeah, so.
That's crazy.
It seems like it makes sense, but it doesn't make sense to everybody out there, so, and, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
So is it flowing over to the fire pond that goes over into um the opposite end from Jaclyn Drive?
No, right now it's flowing into probably three to five properties backyards. And now there's sinkholes forming in front of the ba- like those properties, like at the street level, in the street. I believe it's due an excess amount of water and then also um the connections not being cemented in.
Cemented in properly.
Yeah, um so that would help some of that, but still there's this um groundwater that's at the top level.
I recognize that connection.
That's running down the side of the road that's um creating issues at the end of the driveways and um getting kinda messy out there. Yeah. So.
Well, that was all I had.
So if we would, you know.
Yeah.
I could see that other avenue, you know, being taken, but it wouldn't be um taken lightly and without s- uh some level of resistance.
Yeah.
From some of the uh property owners out there. Unless, from previous discussions, unless we had a full uh engineered survey done and the scope of work was clearly outlined and where the water was gonna end up going. Um be made known in terms of any type of work being conducted.
Litigious society.
Yep.
Mm-hmm.
Alright.
Yeah. Lou, did you have anything that you wanted to discuss this evening?
No.
Uh, so Debbie, how's the new accounting system going?
Sure. Mindy has her frustrations, I still haven't had a chance to like play with it and get reports that I normally would have been able to just. Go in and run on B M S I, cause I knew how to do it, so still working on it.
Alright. Does she have a list of issues, like is she keeping track of what some of the issues are that she's having with it or?
The learning curve. Um, I told her to do that, um and she was gonna, so when she has an issue, she usually just calls them and they kinda can walk her through. Whatever it is, and then now we also have um positive pay, so anytime we write out a check or do an A C H. It goes through T D Bank, but there's a special report you have to run in the software, which would have been with any software. And to upload that, so if there's an exception, if, if a check or a company that we paid. Like today I got an email, you have to go in and check every day to make sure you don't have any alerts saying, hey, we got this payment, should we pay it, should we not pay it? Sorry, I kinda switched gears a little bit, but not, um, so someone has to go in and approve it or deny it, and if you don't respond with it twenty-four hours or by a certain time. They'll kick it back to whoever they, whoever we paid.
Is that because of the software?
Not because of software, no, but it, it's just one, it's just one more headache.
That's the new bank paying here. But is that the bank doing this?
No, well, we requested to do it, it's another layer of security as far as um who we pay.
Was there an issue with security before?
So there, there is, um, not necessarily, but a lot of towns are switching over to this positive pay, so things like that, that happened in, what was it, Peterborough? Don't happen. It's just another layer of security. So no one can get in your bank account. But, yeah, there, there's.
Is it worth it then, is my question, if, I would hate to have us not pay someone.
Right, well, it is, yeah, there's always, one of us can look it up, even me, Mindy or Carleen. So.
And the credit card processor, the B M O?
Yeah. I, I still have to call them because, um, you know, taking notes. Um, so software, we're, we're getting there, it's just the learning curve and where it was end of the year and she was trying to get all that stuff done. Um, that is just a source of frustration, you know, cause we switched over to the new software and then all the reports that have to be done and W twos and all that. Um, the credit card, I have to call them because they actually checked in, they sent me an email last week to say, you know, just wanna follow up and see how everything's going. We hate it. I mean, it's good, but what we thought it was gonna do, I, Matt Hatch was really the only one who has figured it out. About coding everything as you charge it. And Mindy was supposed to be able to print out a report where everyth- when, when she prints out the invoice, all the codes were supposed to show up on the report.
Mm-hmm.
When she printed it and supposedly they're not, so I haven't even had a chance to look into that yet either, but.
Do we still have um support?
Yeah.
From our contract?
Yeah.
So it would be nice, it seems like if she had a list to actually get someone to hear.
Yeah. So this is. Yeah, so that's separate, well, so B M O is the credit card, B S and A is the software.
Oh. Oh, okay.
For accounting. So I did ask to see how much it would cost to have someone come here, even if it was just for a day, we can list out everything. Now, now that we have an idea of how to use it, we need to fine tune it because Nancy has issues, Carleen has issues. And it's just, again, it's the, now I'm back to the, back to the software.
This is around, because the credit card's been in effect for about four months now.
Yeah.
And then the new accounting software, we're going on two and a half to three months.
So. Yeah. Two, yeah.
And not to lose track of it and then make sure that there's not too many Band-Aids being applied.
Yeah, right. Right.
Cause all of this was in the interest of streamlining things and making it easier, not more difficult.
Right. Yeah. So we're kinda back to the.
Cause they're supposed to be like free uh information sharing kinda from the department heads to accounting.
Right. Yep.
And everything digitally coded, so that, you know, those um coding issues weren't happening like in transcription or whatever it was.
Yeah. Right. Right, that, that's, so you're going two different things, that one's credit card, one's software.
Yeah, well, both had like same.
But both, yeah. Right.
The same idea was behind both of them.
Yep.
You know, not that they're, they're one.
Right.
But both like had that same functionality and.
Yeah. It's supposed to make it so much greater and so far it is not, yeah, so we're doing the credit card basically the same way and there's a couple of departments that are turning in the same invoice. Cause two peo- two different people are submitting them, so she's paying it and then looking at it and going, wait, I already paid this and. So it's just, we, we need to, cause they're not uploading the invoice, I don't know, so we need to.
It sounds like it needs attention right away.
It definitely does, yeah.
Yeah.
But now the budget season and deliberative and all that's over, maybe I'll have a minute-ish.
Would be good.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Have these things, and then once it's all lined out.
Yeah.
Then we can talk about that thing we saw last year of getting interest-bearing accounts.
Yeah.
The next level to this whole thing to, yeah.
Right, yeah, for in- investing and stuff.
And even, I would think credit card should have a rewards base.
This one is.
Is it?
Yeah.
Is it cash back or?
Yes, yeah.
Airline miles for.
No.
The third selectman.
Yeah, no, it's, it's cash back.
Yeah, lower.
That's why he's got the airplane.
Yeah.
So now everything's been busy, um, yeah.
Yeah.
Hmm.
Them are things that would really, I think, be a positive thing.
Yeah.
You know, getting that interest bearing, we're blowing it now, since interest rates are so high.
Yeah, oh, yeah. I know.
Yeah.
We'd be making some pretty good money off our general.
Yeah. So I can, so that Beth that came and did that presentation.
Yeah.
About the credit card and the other stuff, the investing, I can, she's the one who reached out to me to see how everything was going and I started sixteen different times to s- reply to her email and I still haven't. Been able to, cause I wanted, I wanted to let her know, you know, like the issues with as far as we thought it was gonna be so much easier and it's not. So, um, and I, I'll mention it to her about that, investing.
Hmm.
But, yeah, no more new things until we get the old things.
It has to be right.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Oh, yeah, yeah, I agree.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, so I'm starting a new project.
Right.
Yeah.
Got it. I agree.
Oh, how's it been going now at the D P W? You pretty good?
Haven't heard any.
Cool. Well, it's good. Alright, yeah, cause there was, um, actually, yeah, so we haven't seen the email that uh Peter was asking about advice on road postings.
Oh, yeah.
I did get them emails.
Oh, you did?
Well, no, not on weight limit posting, just on the road sign.
Yeah, I did. On the roadside position of the roadside.
For Old Tenny.
So then over, yeah, over the weekend, there was additional.
For Tricknet and.
Oh, I didn't get any of them.
Okay, alright.
There's one about moving the sign over to Tricknet and for, and that's for the roofing company, Prime Roofing and somebody else, True Form.
Yeah, yeah, off Tricknet, yeah.
Uh.
Yep, and then uh for um, uh the other one, uh what, Mil- it's Mill Road.
Yeah, for Warwick.
For Warwick Mills, yeah.
Yeah.
Moving that sign further away. But the thing with Tricknet though is that if a truck goes onto Tricknet. Trinket and you move the sign further over, maybe that truck is trying to get through will continue to try to get through into Trinket rather than just being limited to a truck that's going over to Trueform or to uh Prime Roofing.
Yeah, I got to uh actually have some good dialogue with uh Peter last night.
Oh.
Uh uh cause I shot him a text message or gave him a call during the day, he called me back in the evening. And it sounds like he has it under control. It's just kinda more just airing something that was going on and kinda letting us know um that it may be an issue but it's something that has come up previously um. And but from what I understand, he's returned everybody's phone calls and everybody's understanding, you know, what's going on um. And you know, initially like going into mud season, um he's gonna articulate that, you know, during the early mornings or in the evening once you know, the temperatures drop again, that it'll be okay, you know, to be on the roads. But then once we hit a certain temperature range, that it won't be acceptable and he's thinking of drafting up some type of document or something, so it's kind of like an agreement.
Well, sounds complicated.
Yeah, it kinda gets in and then especially this season where mud season could last, you know, six weeks, yeah, so it could be a, you know, quite a headache for him
Quite a lot.
uh going into the spring.
I'll look forward to getting my email back up and running.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Um but uh last I knew, he wasn't looking for any action um from us.
Hmm.
And it's just sort of, you know, to chat about it and you know kinda compare things and he is reaching out to other communities. Um I believe Jaffrey has posted their roads, he said, but Ridge hasn't yet.
Hmm.
So that kinda lends to some disagreement with companies in the area. You know, well, why did you decide to post early whereas it's still open in Ridge but um and then there's some flow things for next year that he can implement uh where he can kinda forecast out a week. And you know, even take out an ad in the paper and just put it out in the paper that, you know, the roads are gonna start to be posted at
Yeah, that'd be a good thing.
this date, so that everybody gets a heads up instead of all the signs just going up.
Yeah.
Hmm.
Yeah.
You know, so yeah, that was encouraging to hear, you know, all the you know, good stuff that he's working on and.
Yeah, and on the signs note, um I noticed we're missing a few more road signs. And I'm wondering if is has it ever been done where either the selectmen or the P D or somebody puts a reward for um turning in the person who's stealing our signs.
I don't know. I've not ever heard of it.
Do we have a fund we could use?
I don't know.
I'd like to see if that would work.
Yeah.
Cause if it's kids, kids sometimes need money. And if they got a reward to rat someone out and then we can get our signs right, but if this keeps going on, I mean, it's ridiculous.
Yeah, yeah. I agree. Have you heard of Moore?
Well, I saw Benny Hill is missing now.
Jeez, yeah, I didn't even notice. Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Have residents put game cams?
No, I don't like surveillance. But a reward is an old ta- old-fashioned thing.
Yeah, I was almost thinking uh before just advertising the fact that if people wanted a sign, they could just buy it.
I know.
Yeah, simple enough.
It's no, that's no fun.
Yeah, is it for fun or is it for
I don't know.
some type of sentimental value to whatever sign it is?
Well, this person is getting very sentimental about a lot of things.
Well, is that, well, is it one person or is it just?
Yeah.
I don't know, maybe it's not.
Well, like Mindy had suggested before, what's this, if you're gonna offer a reward, why don't I just take down the Ashby Road sign and bring it in and say, oh, hey I got this back from someone who stole it.
No, no, no.
Yeah, we gotta collar somebody for it.
Yeah, somebody's gonna get in trouble.
Oh, someone's gonna pay the price.
For information leading to the.
Oh, gotcha, okay.
Yeah.
That's generally how rewards go.
Yeah, not reward for the.
Yeah, I don't know, something to think about.
Just trying to clarify.
Just popped in my head.
Into the arrest.
Maybe you could talk to Mike about that. It usually goes through a police department.
Yeah, yeah.
It's hard to, I did talk to Mike about that and it's kind of hard to keep up on it when you're down to the one or two patrolmen.
Yeah, but this wouldn't be something to keep up on. It would just be a matter of putting out a public statement and if someone came forward with information, then it would just be a follow-up.
Cause there'd be no additional surveillance on their part.
No.
Yeah.
But they'll somebody'll just go steal signs up results.
Well, possibly. I'm suspecting that it's either a group of people or a single person
Would it be anonymous?
cause why wouldn't you get a rash? You wouldn't get random people all deciding at the same time that, hey. Would you? I'm gonna go take a sign.
I I don't know. I've never taken down a a sign before.
I know, I know. Anyways, there was a thought.
Yeah, but. Yeah.
There's a thought.
All right.
Okay.
Yeah, that would be good, like the kind, no, that's no, topical and fine. Um
Sorry to be a disruption.
Yeah, that definitely seemed like something that could be done, but it's gotta be in the R S As or like how would that?
I believe you have.
Would I have to run through the P D here?
I'd say you guys that.
Yeah, there was an R S A on, that was in our last.
Yeah. A while ago.
Whenever that topic came up.
Yeah.
Yeah. Anyways.
Yeah, I wouldn't be opposed to like course of action. I don't like um getting close to the old three-one-one line but.
What's that? Oh.
Colony neighbor.
Oh, no, but this is for something criminal.
No, no, that's all right, yeah, yeah.
And it's not a matter of someone not wearing a mask.
So do you want me to do anything on this or are you guys gonna?
It's right here. That was the R S A. There is a civil, there is a fine for stealing road signs set by the state, it looks like.
This is a um stop work order.
Oh, whoops, was it?
Yeah.
What was I looking at?
R S A.
I saw the word.
Really?
I'm looking at it and I'm like, wait, what?
Trying to find the relevance here, yeah, close, close.
Yeah, I don't think I printed it out. I think I sent it to you guys in an email.
It could be.
When we were discussing this before.
Yeah, that'd be good to have for the next meeting too.
All right.
Okay.
In the meantime, please stop stealing signs wherever you are. Right?
Cost your parents a lot of money.
Yes. All right, last call, Lou.
Gotcha.
Jason. Debbie. Uh thank you very much uh for watching this evening. Ron, thank you for uh recording and posting it for us. Uh at this point with like, I'd like to make a motion to go in a non-public session under R S A ninety-one A three-two L for legal. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.